My name is Todd Moore. I own Alamos Drilling, Inc., which has seven Chappaqua oil wells in Southern Archuleta County. I'm here today to request reconsideration of penalty relief based on the letter I received from Scott Walt, taken July 26, 2021, denying such. With reference in his letter to a previous reduction of penalty back in 2014, I felt Alamos Drilling's testimony should be provided. The 2014 situation dealt with Alamos's venture to submit property declaration schedules, AKA reditions. In the same setting as this, and after discussion of circumstances, events, and Alamos's revenues, one of the commissioners asked me what I thought was reasonable. What could I afford? $1,200? I said, "That'd be fine." That's how the fix was determined. Fast forward, April 30, 2019. I put a check in the mail to the Assistant Collector's Office for the full amount for that tax period. To my surprise, the next day I discovered the reditions due April 15 had not been mailed. But it filled out immediately and mailed that day with a cover letter extending apologies. When tax payments came later that year, I observed a penalty which equated to 23 days delinquency, not 16, a total of over $16,000. The rendition form suggests the county may, not will, may assess a penalty of $100 per day up to a total of $3,000. I don't know how it is for other businesses in Archuleta County, but large penalties are listed as accessible in the only gas-rated environment of Colorado at the state level. My experience has been more times than nine. State penalties are not fully assessed as each situation is reviewed and evaluated. The main objective is to have whatever issue corrected and investigated for actual damage than carelessness, neglect, and/or a pattern of either. In this case, I mailed the forms the moment they were discovered and sent, probably corrected. Alamos Drilling has historically submitted its taxes in full and on time, averaging roughly $4,000 per year. Even if they were late, we'd probably charge a few hundred dollars of them for each month of delinquency. I don't believe even the IRS assesses a penalty of four times someone's tax burden for admitting a couple of weeks late. If given the opportunity to answer the same question asked back in 2014, what do you think is reasonable slash what can you afford? I'd say whatever other businesses' aliments size are assessed, or 10% of the tax burden plus interest for the period of delinquency.
Thank you. Can I ask Bill Hudson?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is, oh, I have to go back to that. Bill Hudson, 446 Loma Street. This is part of a 78-page study that you may have already seen. It was done by Root Policy Research for Housing Solutions of Delano. I think that's, I think it was for the, for the COTL. I'm not quite clear on that. But, so this has, this has some, this is just the pages about, specifically about Archuleta County. And what I thought was good to note here was on the third page of your packet, in the bottom right corner, the county struggled to add enough units or workforce. An estimated 800 additional units for permanent residents is needed to fully accommodate job growth in the minds of the community. So we have, we have a project ahead of us. If these folks, after studying the whole region, this whole southwest region, have come to the determination that we're, we're short about 800 workforce housing units, we've got to get to work and, and get that done. One of the things that, that the group I'm part of, that is Housing Partners, has proposed to the town government is a permanent funding stream. And you were all at Jennifer's presentation on the 30th of August, and you've heard her say that the permanent funding stream is essential to addressing this problem. So what we, what we are following up on is a recommendation that we've heard discussed at the town council for possibly an excise tax on short-term rentals. And what, there are a couple of pieces to, to an excise tax if, if it was to be put in place. Short-term rentals pay a much lower property tax rate than the hotel right next door. Even if they have the same amount of bedrooms, the, the, the short-term rentals pay a residential tax of 7.15, and the, and the hotel next door pays a property tax of 29%, four times that amount. So, so we think an excise tax could help level the playing field for the hotels and the short-term rentals. If, if it were reasonable and if it were aimed at leveling that playing field. Also, an excise tax would move people out of the short-term rental market if they're not really serious. If they're not really serious about it, they're probably not going to want to pay any excise tax to rent out their, their house three or four times a year. And, and maybe those, those, those could become long-term and would be part of this 800 units that we need. I have a couple more comments, but my few minutes is up.
Mr. Chair? If I may, can I address Bill?
Yes.
All right. Bill, you know, I don't disagree with you. I, the part I disagree with is the excise tax. I don't think that's going to be a substantial enough amount of money to fix the needs of the housing, of the workforce housing. I mentioned back when I was on the CDC solution back then, and it would be probably a possibility of a sales tax increase to dedicate that money toward workforce housing or toward housing or housing infrastructure. That would be a more permanent, long-term fix. As we know, the economy changes, everything happens differently in the future. We can't, we can't safeguard the sustainability of an excise tax on a short-term rental. So I think what I would say is if we're going to fix it, let's fix it for the long haul and not for just the short-term quick fix that is just going to band-aid someone. I think we need to run our minds and maybe look toward how we can fix this permanently.
Well, I'd love to sit down with you at some time, maybe this week, and we can look at the numbers and see if this actually would generate more money than a sales tax.
Okay.
So we could, we could set up a meeting and discuss that.
Right.
We'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, there's no more comments? Closeout comments, and we have a proclamation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I think you just signed up. She's already signed.
We did. We signed.
Oh, good job.
I'm Becky Jacobson. I'm the Archuleta County 4-H coordinator. Today I brought with me Macy Jacobson, who is a council member, council senator, and her role in her position, and Mike Gray, who is also a council founder. And we are going to help you with the proclamation for National 4-H Week. Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, having supported almost 6 million youth across the country thus far. And whereas 4-H has helped 150-plus youth annually in Archuleta County to become confident and independent resilient and compassionate leaders.
Whereas 4-H is delivered by Cooper Tive Extension, a community of more than 100 public universities and foundation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing and hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship. And whereas National 4-H, we showcase the incredible experiences that 4-H offers, well, 4-H offers young people, and highlights and remarkable 4-H youth in Archuleta County who work each day to make a positive impact on those young people.
And whereas 4-H Network, 4-H is a network of 600,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals provide caring and supportive mentoring to all 4-Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Archuleta County do hereby proclaim October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as National 4-H Week throughout Archuleta County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize 4-H for the significant impact it has made in continuing to make my power use the life skills they need to lead for a lifetime.
Thank you, guys. Excuse me. I think everyone knows how I feel about it. My kids were in it throughout their childhood and when they graduated high school. So if you guys have comments?
I'm also worthy of value. I'm a parent of three kids who are in 4-H, and I know what opportunities this can offer for you that might not otherwise be presented to them, so I appreciate all of your work and your involvement. Thank you for your comments today.
Well, I'm a shocked, you know, I've never been a part of 4-H, but I have been a part of the Archuleta County Fair Board for several years in the past, and I know the significance and the impact of what it entails of our youth and our upcoming future leaders of our county and/or state.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to adopt a proclamation declaring that we adopt October 3rd through 9th, 2021 as National 4-H Week.
Right. Second? We go to the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the first.
Thank you.
On behalf of Archuleta County 4-H, we would like to present each of you with a 4-H dress you're assigned for your offices. We appreciate your continued support each year.
Mary, you should slide the glass for that.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're going to resume the regular meeting at 1:44. We'll begin land use board. Remember ours, these were our two.
Thank you. Good afternoon, gentlemen. So today I have some more land use regulation changes. These are not nearly as dramatic as the last ones, so hopefully it's going to be easier. I presented you guys with a document and tried to explain that some of these things are really simple administrative changes. Some of them are a little more substantive and might require more conversation. So I'm going to kind of move past the more administrative ones unless you need to comment or have questions, okay? So the last time we did this, we did it one section at a time and wrote it on each section. That's how you get to approach it this time.
You guys have thoughts? This will be easier.
I don't think there's that much wrong here, but...
I don't have any questions, actually. I don't know what it is.
I think if there's anything contested, then we can consider that separately.
Okay, so I'll just go right through it, and we'll go from there. Okay, so we'll start with section one. Hey, there's a good idea. First, a group of changes on that first page are mostly administrative with the exception of 115, adding a sentence that the Director of County Development or Designee shall be responsible for interpreting these regulations unless otherwise specifically stated. That was recommended by County Attorney, and it aligns with other counties and how their regulations read. The rest of this here is really just typos, administrative, Oxford comments, and should be happy to discuss at length if you're bored by that topic. The next page, the next, 1431, paragraph, sub-paragraph 2 has some substantive changes. I'm adding the word operator or personal operators or operated or operated use. That would apply not only to short-term rental property matters, but if, if there's a oil operation or sand and gravel or something like that that could potentially even have a complaint on our desk right now, I'm trying to deal with about an already permitted oil well and whether or not they're violating conditions of their approval. And so if we were to determine that they were, and we were to determine that they, you know, weren't motivated to correct those problems, we could potentially just withhold permits, other permits that they might be seeking while they can tell they correct problems on the original. Because right now, it's all about property owners and to some degree contractors for building, but really someone who's operating a use that's been permitted doesn't necessarily have the same protection, I guess. So anyway, that's what adding those words is intended to do in that paragraph. Down to 144, non-emergency matters, 1441. What we're doing here and in the following paragraph is we're adding explicitly the ability to notify someone via an email address that has previously been validated, which means we have either received email from that email address in communication, or they, the owner has used that email address to register in one of our official systems like Community Rights for Short Termals or something like that. So if we have an email address like that, we would like to be able to provide notice of violation or privacy notices and other types of notices to those email addresses. Number one, that's more expeditious. As you know, it can be, if you're emailing from inside to outside, it could take a while, and we don't want to lose two weeks out of the 30 days to respond via that timeline. Additionally, the cost to mail with certified mail or certifications of mailing would increase my postal budget significantly. So where this is allowed through the validated email address, we would like to do that, and/or post at the site. So in the non, in the emergency matters section, it does allow posting at the site a sign or a notice at the property, where it does not allow that in non-emergency. And I think that we find that that's a very effective way of communicating with people. So we would like to be able to use both of those methods to communicate as appropriate. And that's the same for the next following paragraph. And that's all for section one. Section two, the table for the review process. We, when we put vacation rental permits in place, got rid of administrative CUPs, we missed a couple of things and just administratively cleaned up the, make it consistent. So this, just make sure that vacation rental permit review process is on this table because it wasn't included before. And then on the following page, the legal lot certificate, which we also did in the last language change for the improperly divided parcels, that, that review process was also not addressed on the table. So we're just adding it because we felt to add that when we did it before. Next page, the table for public notice. Again, we've had several appeals of decisions that have been made by the Development Department, and so I thought it was important to, to put explicit language in how to request an appeal, what needs to be included, what are the timelines, so that the, the people understand what's required and how to, how to effectively get an appeal heard so that they don't lose out on an opportunity. So we added it to the public notice table to make sure that we're showing it because it is a public hearing, there is a notice requirement in the paper, and that kind of drives some of the timelines. And then below that, 2212, is all added language to define how to request an appeal and how that's managed administratively. It's also important to note that this is essentially exactly how it reads in the regulation right now for a Board of Adjustments Appeal. If you're going to appeal variance or something to the Board of Adjustments as a required, then this process is basically exactly what it already says for that. This just is more generic and covers all types of appeals. So that's what that entire section is about. Any questions about any of that? There's a little bit there. Okay? And then below that, we just had to renumber the subsequent paragraphs to stay consistent. Section of variances. Right now, there are a few places that refer to waivers and variances, waivers, and there's, there's really nothing in here about what a waiver is and how to get a waiver, and how do I ask for a waiver? That's called a variance. That's what a variance is essentially. So we're just eliminating the term waiver and making it consistent so that the people understand that it's really not a waiver, it's a variance, so that it's handled in accordance with this section. So that's what that is doing there. And on to section three. The first thing we do here, there's a lot of administrative, where I just added the UVR so it's easier to refer to in the text. It's just an abbreviation that's already approved. It's just putting it more appropriately throughout. Because if you really, if you look at the, this section, it talks about issuance of a land use permit. Well, there's 10 types of land use permits. Which one? So this is very specific to that, just to make sure there's no confusion. The sub-paragraph four up above, this just, right now, it basically says for a use by right permit that the county engineer and the county plan to review it. And it doesn't really open the door that if there are other parties I think need to review, I want to make sure they have the opportunity to, that I can staff it to the fire department, or utility company, or the water board, or whoever I think is appropriate based on what's being asked. So that just explicitly allows me the right to do that, which I do every other type of permit except this one. I don't do it unless I think it's relevant to the, I mean, I want to make as easy as possible on all of this if I can. And then down below, previously, it basically, 32264, read that if you discontinue a use that's been approved by use by right for 12 months, then you don't get to resume, period. And I just thought that was kind of dead end. I thought there should be a, a way to get back on it, especially after an experience like we had with COVID, where there's probably a lot of things that had to stop for a while. So basically, all we're saying is that if you want to resume the use, then you'll have to go through whatever review there is, whatever the appropriate review is based on the current regulation. So right, today might be use by right, maybe next, next year we decide whatever was a use by right before is now going to be a conditional use permit. Well, if you were a use by right before, you were approved under that, but now you've stopped, when you come back to resume, if the appropriate review is conditional use permit, then that's what you'll have to do to resume use. And that's really all this is saying. It allows an opportunity to resume something else, and it's like a one, one shot, and you're done. So that's what we're going for there. Going forward to conditional use permit, 3231, the... Yeah, so this is refers to the hearing, the opportunity to request a hearing. That's, that's a referral to that. Down below that, we eliminated again administrative CUP. We got rid of that completely last, in the March timeframe. We just didn't, we just missed a couple of paragraphs, or we didn't remove that effectively from the language to avoid confusion. Okay, so then this is one of the major things that made us decide to come forward and talk to you is under temporary use permits. Right now, temporary use permits address staying in an RWD on your property for up to 120 considered days per calendar year for personal use, that you continue that with a temporary use permit. First of all, we felt that if the Forest Service allows 14 days without any kind of permit, we should allow the same thing. So that was one thing we added. And the other thing we felt was missing, because we get calls about this, is tents. You know, can I stay in a tent on my property? So we're kind of aligning them the same that you can, as long as, so 14 days without, what we're asking for is a permit, but not a no-fee permit, because we want to be able to review your waste management plan, right? How are you going to collect and manage your waste while you're staying for 14 days or 120 days? So we're going to look for the right, make sure that they have a process that's compliant with health rules, and that they have thought about that, and that they have a plan. So that's why even for 14 days, we'd like to command the permit. It won't cost you anything, you just want to review your plan, and we give you a permit, you know, adopt, and it'll say, "I'm good," in case the neighbors want to complain that you're staying in your tent and try to tell me that they're, you know, dumping their poo on the ground, and then they're probably done. So that's what all of this language is about. Everything that's here was started with the, with the Health Department, so. And then administratively, I also, based on other activities warranted in the county, I did remove the direct reference to San Juan Basin Health Department and just made it generic, whatever the local Health Department is that way, and wherever we go. But that now or in the future, we're, we're, that change in the regulation. Onto the next page, section five. It was pointed out to me by a short-term rental organization, Orange Organization, that the language in lodging standards was different than short-term rental standards. And that happened because the original language was identical, and then after discussion with you, we made some changes to the language about the types of beds and futons and all that stuff. So we, this paragraph used to be in both, but we removed it from short-term rental, and so we just wanted, we missed the fact that it was duplicated, and we don't want to have inconsistent standards, so we're removing that just to make it consistent in short-term rental, same standards.
And how those were pulled from the state, right?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was my understanding.
The new language is directly from the state.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yep. Section seven, this is where, one of those places where it refers to a waiver instead of a variance, and we simply adjusted it, plus it referred to it, so that you can appeal, you can apply to the Board of County Commissioners for a waiver, which is not correct, you go to the Board of Adjustments for variance. So we just cleared that up. And then the last thing was the definitions. These definitions are all related to the changes related to temporary use permits that defines camping and groups together recreational vehicles for soft-sided tents for short-term and for whether it's commercial or personal use. It can have, you can get a permit to be a campground for commercial camping, or you can get a temporary use permit to do personal camping. We thought we should define personal use because it defines commercial in our regulation, but it doesn't say anything about, well, how do you define, distinguish between whether I'm being paid for it or I'm doing it for my land use. So we clarified that, and then we defined a tent, which is relevant here as well as in some of the building permit discussions, so, you know, can I live in TV year-round? So that's it. Any questions about anything?
I have a question.
No, thank you.
I have one. Mary, is this starting with Resolution 71 or?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six? Thank you, Ben. Mary, do you have a motion?
No.
No public comment, sorry. Good job. Let's see. Is there a order against on public comment? Maybe it has any? Okay, we'll close a couple of comments. Any comments? Sorry.
I have a question. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to adopt Resolution 2021-76, amending Archuleta County land use regulations as presented.
A second. Motion, a second. I was there.
Aye.
I am. Motion carries. Okay, we're adjourned. Land use hearing and convening liquor board at 1:59.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Can you agree okay?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Great. So for your consideration this afternoon, as the conservative general liquor board, just one item, consideration approval of the hotel and restaurant, liquor license three bill for Two Chicks and a Hippie LLC, due, uh, due business as Two Chicks and a Hippie, and accept agreement's approval as presented.
Okay. Make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to approve. Liquor board consensus present.
A second. Motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we're adjourned liquor board, we'll be in the regular meeting at 2 o'clock when we decide agenda.
Sure. For your conservative this afternoon, we have payable warrants to purchase cars from September 22nd, 2021 to October 5th, 2021. We have regular meeting minutes from September 21st, 2021. Special meeting minutes from September 17th, 2021. We have consideration of Resolution 2021-77, to consolidate two lots into one lot in Paeja Park, Number 10A subdivision, owned by David Keaton and Amy Rivera. We have consideration of Resolution 2021-79, to consolidate four lots into one lot in Rio Montego subdivision A, owned by Magda E. Bichter, Bichter. We have consideration of Resolution 2021-80, to consolidate two lots into one lot in Chris Mountain Village in Gose Unit 2, owned by Christopher T. and Eva V. Goyner. And H is consideration of Resolution 2021-81, to consolidate three lots into one lot in Aston Springs subdivision Number 2, owned by Heather A. Then we have ratification of the chairman's signature on a corner or independent contractor agreement with Elizabeth Blitzer. Ratification of the chairman's signature on a letter of support to San Juan Basin area at Eaton's deal at Eaton. Ratification of the chairman's signature on the commissioner designation form for CCI. And lastly, ratification of the chairman's... to San Juan Basin here at Eaton's deal, Eaton. Ratification of the chairman's signature on the Commissioner designation form for CCI. And lastly, ratification of the chairman's signature on letter of support for community revitalization program funds. And that is your consideration agenda and our agreement's approval as presented.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Considered General as presented.
A second. Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Back to old business.
Tim Hatch here.
Yes, so you're first.
Okay, go ahead.
Tim, can you proceed?
No, Tim's not here, so can you take care of it?
Okay, I can take care of it. Yeah, so previously, um, the board approved a bid of $45,003,35 out of a conservation trust fund, uh, for ending up and installing an access road to the proposed Altria Park located in, quote, Boulevard, just a property owned by the county itself, the Humane Society. Uh, it's been determined, um, by a Davis Engineering and a neurologist, additional culverts will be needed to, uh, handle the design for a hundred-year flood given the, um, the drainage in that area. And this includes additional costs of about $12,730 or total cost not to exceed $58,065 to complete the work. Uh, I spoke with Tim and with Leanne about hostility of using, um, already appropriated funds in the Roadbridge Fund. Because Tim mentioned some of the money's been allocated for cement repair or something along those lines that can be used as here. And he can use some of those funds to cover basically the, the cost of additional culverts, the material with all over the cells. So it should limit any additional little impact on the conservation trust level.
Great. Mr. Chair, any questions on that?
I don't know, I think that this was explained to me, uh, well enough by, uh, by Mr. Weaver earlier in the week in meeting.
I just have a comment, and, and it goes out to Tim Hatch. I appreciate him looking into it and finding the other money elsewhere, which helps Archuleta County make this project happen. So, uh, a public thanks to Tim Hatch for working extra hard on this, I really appreciate it.
Good point, Tom, okay. Okay, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the revised bid by Colorado Rocky Dirt Excavation for culvert and woodwork and enclosed in the amount not to exceed $58,065 as presented.
Second.
Motion a second, all those there?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All of the new business.
Chair, first up is consideration and approval of letter of support to San Juan County's application for the planning grant program under House Bill 2021-1271. Again, this is a letter of support, um, period towards proposed grant program. Uh, it is, again, it's a planning grant program, working with Southwest Collage and contracting Southwest Collage to use the funding to part with the local jurisdictions to reduce the streamline of affordable housing development process across the region. It's allowed for potential developers to purchase materials at a greater scale and create opportunities for local jurisdictions to update, streamline, and current land use and, the land use and zoning codes with the intention of a more efficient development method. So again, it's a letter of support for San Juan County, but it's really a, a regional approach to affordable housing development. Uh, and that's all succinct with House Bill 2021-1271.
Mr. Chair, any questions?
I do not, thank you.
I do not. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a letter of support to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs and supporting San Juan County's application for the proposed grant program as presented.
A second. The motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have a B.
Yeah, so I have a B before you with, uh, resolution 2021-82.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I find that's right. So based on this, it does a resolution changing, uh, the December meeting date for the board from December 14th to December 7th.
Mr. Chair. I move to adopt resolution 2021-82, amending the meeting dates for December 2021 as presented.
Second.
The motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Here on the C. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good.
So, um, we're just asking that the current personnel policy be amended to include the dispatch center employees in on-call pay as the state funds the dispatch. We don't need to have, you know, four people that are staff fully, but if you have a person on-call, um, that can be there to cover in high volume times, I think that would be beneficial to the community and to dispatch.
Mr. Chair, any questions?
I do not, I just appreciate the work they did.
Yes.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution 2021-83, amending section 214 of the Personnel Policy and Procedures Handbook for the county employees to include on-call pay for dispatch center employees as presented.
A second.
The motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so we have nothing further for the board, just gonna use the adjournment 208. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.